Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oshkosh Council May 24, 2022 meeting. Please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Mugeraw?
Here.
Hansen, Miller, and Paul Mary?
Here.
For present.
And Councilmember Erickson will lead us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we honor those who have come before us, including the original stewards of this area, the Menominee and Ho-Chunk nations. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some awards this evening, the Acanthus Awards. Shirley Bravender Maddox, would you join me up front? Shirley is going to read the narrative and then we'll present each of the awards.
Good evening, councilors, community. For over 40 years, the Oshkosh Landmarks Commission has presented the Acanthus Award for Historic Preservation during the month of May, Historic Preservation Month. It is very difficult to not wax eloquent about the things that people have done in our community to preserve our historic past. But the mayor and I are going to work on this, to get this through in a timely manner, and yet pay our respects to the wonders. The first nominee is the White Grass Company. The Oshkosh Landmarks Commission is pleased to present the Acanthus Award to the Oshkosh Housing Authority for the adaptive reuse of an industrial building providing needed housing. The White Grass Company manufactured rugs and carpets from grass that grew in abundance in the marshals of the Fox River Basin, west and south of Oshkosh. It was useless, but this raw material woven into carpets created jobs for thousands of Oshkosh workers. At one time, it was the second-largest employer in the city. The second, the two-story headquarters, built in 1910 and located on Custer Avenue, covered four city blocks. When it closed in 1966, Lennox Candles and a series of other businesses followed. After being empty for a while, the buildings were purchased by the Oshkosh Housing Authority. It took a vision, passion, and creativity to uncover and release the potential of this historic rundown industrial complex. After overcoming many obstacles, the Weight Rug Place opened in 2019 and provides unique housing in a restored historic building for low-income folks with preference for the disabled, the elderly, and veterans. Each apartment is custom-designed, letting in natural light, walls of windows, the massive beams and ceiling beams, and the floating ceiling heights as far as 24 feet, giving the folks a unique living space. Saving old buildings is good for the community. Thank you to the Oshkosh Housing Authority for providing needed housing for city residents and saving part of our industrial heritage history. Congratulations.
Thank you, Shirley, so much. And here to receive on behalf of the Oshkosh Housing Authority is Lindsay Erickson.
Thank you. So I'm accepting this on behalf of the Oshkosh Housing Authority Board and staff. So this Weight Rug Place provides 56 units of affordable housing for our community. So this project really has revitalized that area and provides safe, affordable, stable housing for our community. So we're proud to accept this. Thank you.
The second award is to Kristin and Eric Hoopman, and receiving on behalf of them is Kristin Kane. Kristin, do you want to come up? There she is. The Oshkosh Landmarks Commission presents the Acanthus Award to Kristin and Eric Hoopman for the historic preservation of the adaptive reuse of the Gibson Tire Company, built in 1925, as an ancillary building to the automotive trade. This building, which is now the Gibson Social Club, exists within the historic building's commercial fabric of stained, painted brick walls, cement floors, steel girders highlighting the wooden ceiling, original windows lighting the wide-open space, front showroom windows that traditionally brought in customers, and a beautiful skylight providing natural light. The owners and the craftsmen incorporated historic pieces of massive cabinets, creating a back bar, and incorporating Gothic architectural designs in both the ironwork and wood cabinetry. This building's exterior features a glazed terracotta veneer enriched with urns, egg-and-dart designs, and bead-on-real moldings, volutes, and cartouches, all architectural terms. We commend Kristin and Eric for their vision for a building connected to the automotive trade to bring life to downtown in the Gibson Social Club by restoring and preserving a building connected to the early trade in Oshkosh. Congratulations.
Thank you, Shirley. And what an incredible building. I was in there for a recent community art show, and it's just absolutely fantastic.
I'm so excited to be accepting this award on behalf of the Hoopmans and the Gibson Social Club. It's been such a dream and a vision for all of us to have this part of the downtown Oshkosh community and be able to bring events and exciting parts of the community to Oshkosh. So thank you so much for this award. What an honor.
The next award is to Michelle Locken. I believe Michelle may be the youngest recipient in 40 years. The Oshkosh Landmarks Commission is proud to award the Acanthus Award to Michelle Locken for her preservation activities. Using her skills developed as a history student at UW-Oshkosh, Michelle curated her first book from her family's private postcard collection and her grandfather, Harold E. Helm, whose postcard collection is in the Winnebago County Historical and Archaeological Society. Postcards were a revolutionary media in early 20th-century America. Whenever a friend would verge off on a trip to a new and exciting place, they would say, "Send me a postcard." Inspired by her grandfather's collection of antique Oshkosh postcards, Michelle worked with many individuals, and I can't name all of them for time's sake, but she did connect with the Winnebago County Historical Society, with the Oshkosh Public Library, and with UW-Oshkosh. Her mother, Nancy, was also her longtime supporter in this project. Her 2020 book, entitled "Postcard History Series: Oshkosh," is a visual masterpiece of the turn of the century. Broken into sections outlining notable buildings, parks, scenic views, and community treasures, this book is a looking glass into our collective history. If a picture is worth 1,000 words, then this book actively preserves history by expanding on each postcard with verified historical information, and it is readily digestible for readers of all skill levels. We thank Michelle for her contribution to celebrating the history of Oshkosh through her annotated book of postcards from the early 20th century. May many more young people be inspired by Michelle to learn about our city's history and value preserving its historic structures. Congratulations.
Thank you, Shirley, and I can't wait to read this book.
Well, thanks so much for the award and the nomination. This is a really fun project, not only to learn about the community and share out kind of a pictorial history of Oshkosh, but I actually learned a lot about my family through this project. And really, learning about history and community, family and community kind of go hand in hand. So great introspect of the city and my own family history. But so thank you for the award.
Our next award is to La Luxe del Mundo, a church that was built in 1875 at 101 West 10th Avenue. I'd like to call Pastor Jose Robles. The Oshkosh Landmarks Commission presents the Acanthus Award to La Luxe del Mundo and Pastor Jose Robles for stabilizing and preserving the many stained-glass windows in the Wood de Clapaud Church built in 1875. This church was originally the German Methodist Episcopal Church at 101 West 10th Avenue. It was designed by an architect, T. Dudley Allen. The Gothic Revival Church is illuminated by many beautiful stained-glass windows, which were in need of great repair and stabilization. The congregation and the brothers, hermanos, have provided protection on the exterior side of the windows to protect them from the elements and repaired and replaced broken panes. The care and concern to be good caretakers is obvious when seeing the maintenance of the interior of this church. We are grateful and pleased to acknowledge La Luxe del Mundo for the continued maintenance and preservation of this lovely historic church on the south side of Oshkosh. Often, churches and schools are the hub of a neighborhood. May this church flourish in this neighborhood, and may others show pride, as you have, in maintaining and preserving their historic buildings in this neighborhood. Congratulations.
Thank you, Pastor Robles. And by the way, they have some incredible tamales there as well. So congratulations.
I want to give thanks to everyone in this evening who make this possible. We really appreciate this because this was the work united from all the brothers from Milwaukee that came and helped us and make this possible to preserve this historical church. So I want to say thanks to everyone in the name of the Luz del Mundo Church, the Light of the World, and the Apostle Nason Joaquin is our spiritual leader. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. And our final award is for residents. I'd like to have David Beardsley and Sue Tatum come forward. The City of Oshkosh Landmarks Commission recognizes David Beardsley and Sue Tatum with the Acanthus Historic Preservation Award for their efforts to preserve and restore their 1870 residence, built for R.J. Weisbrode at 907 Washington Avenue and designed by William Waters. This is one of the most creative Italian designs in terms of detail, according to the Wisconsin Historical Society. The couple has removed the modern front porch, added in back in 1903, and installed a new porch, true to the original Italianate style of the home. They replaced 14 aluminum storm windows with the same-sized wood windows. During restoration done by Terry and Matt Leib, they discovered windows that had been hidden, so they added two new windows on the second floor to match the original ones on the first floor. Throughout the rehabilitation, David and Sue worked with their contractors to save and preserve the historic elements, exterior and interior. The architectural highlights are the front porch, perfect, the exquisite deals at every elevation, and the many beautifully restored windows. We commend the owners for their commitment to preserving their home as an example of Oshkosh craftsmanship and quality materials used to build the homes in their Washington Avenue Historic District. We commend you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you so much for the recognition. We truly appreciate it. It was a labor of love, and I'm glad you mentioned labor restoration. We could not have done it without them. Thank you again.
And thank you, Shirley. We look forward to the Acanthus Awards every year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Okay, we have another presentation this evening from Jessica Meidel from the Downtown Business Improvement District regarding designated outside refreshment area. Jessica, come right up.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. I think we'll wait for Jake to get my presentation up on the screen. I don't know if he's in here right now. Oh, there he is. Okay. Well, I can get started without it, I think. So like I said.
Here we go.
Okay, perfect. I'm Jessie Meidel. I manage the Downtown Business Improvement District, and I am here with the Vice Chair of my Board, Chris Larson, who is a business owner and property owner in our downtown district. And we're super excited to talk to you about the DORA. I'm sure you've heard a little bit about it, and we're excited to be here, letting you know kind of what the proposal entails and helping answer any questions that you guys might have. So before we get into the DORA, I just wanted to go over a little bit about what the bid does. I believe I presented in fall of last year about all the things that we accomplished in 2021. But for those of you who don't know what the bid is, it's a Business Improvement District. So essentially, there are 115 taxable, accessible properties in the bid district. There is a 12-person board representing our district, and our 2022 operating budget was about $183,940. If you can skip to the next slide. Thank you. So the bid does a lot of tasks. We do a lot to make downtown a destination for both our residents and visitors. We take on everything from the beautification of our downtown district to event planning, advertising for our businesses, business recruitment and retention. So we are working hard to accomplish a lot for our downtown businesses. And I am going to tell you a little bit about the DORA. I think after hearing Amy Albright from the Convention and Visitors Bureau speak about the Roger Brooks presentation, we talked, there was a lot of things that he suggested that our community do to make it more exciting for visitors and our residents. And one of those things was this idea of 250-plus days of activity per year. So this DORA concept is kind of something that we think can help address that issue at a very minimal cost. A DORA is a district in the downtown area in which visitors ages 21 and older can consume alcoholic beverages outdoors, within the area's boundaries, during the designated hours, and according to DORA rules. We have a certain area that we would like the DORA district to be within. It's essentially our entire bid district plus the 600 and 700 blocks of North Main Street, and also includes a little bit to kind of connect the Leach Amphitheater to the district. And then the proposed hours for the DORA would be Thursday and Friday evenings from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And the rules of the DORA, patrons obviously who are purchasing the DORA cups must be 21 or older. DORA beverages must be purchased at participating licensed establishments. You cannot bring your own beer into the district. DORA beverages must be empty or disposed of before entering licensed establishments, and you may not enter an unlicensed business with your DORA cup. DORA drinks are also not permitted outside of the DORA exit points. So the DORA cup, there's a reason for this cup. Like I said, you cannot leave, enter a licensed establishment with a full drink. So we, all DORA drinks will be required to be provided and consumed in designated and approved DORA cups. Like I said, DORA cups can only be provided by designated and participating bars and restaurants, and those wishing to drink a DORA beverage will pay a fee on top of the cost of the drink, so owners can cover the cost of any additional things that need to go into running this program. So there are a lot of benefits to having a DORA. Over the last couple of months, I've been researching different cities in Ohio that have been doing similar things. There actually are a lot of cities throughout the U.S. that do something like this. It's not really a new thing. It's maybe new to some of us, but, and a lot of the things that, after doing my research, I found was there's an increase in visitors to bars and restaurants, the ability to allow like quick-to-go service. So if, you know, someone's entering Bar 430 for the farmer's market, it's super busy in there, they're able to go grab something and move on. So they're able to serve more people on that day. It allows for social distancing, of course. It lengthens the time that visitors spend downtown. It can increase a unique experience in Oshkosh, and it's great for tourism and economic development, and it can enhance our downtown events. I think this is one of the biggest benefits of the DORA. It kind of allows us to emphasize our farmer's market, things like Main Street Music Festival, Jazz Fest, and can also help increase retail sales with more foot traffic downtown. So back to the 250 days of activity per year, which Roger Brooks had talked about in his presentation to us. Just trying to see kind of what's on my presentation. So DORA will increase the number of events and event attendance to help achieve those 250 days of activity, and will increase the general foot traffic. And with little to no investment, we can try something that we've never, that would have significant impact downtown and significant impact on activity downtown. So we would like to propose a pilot program, which would run from June through October. We would like to just do this as a trial to see kind of how it would go, and then reassess it in October with how we want to move forward with it. So now is time for questions, if you have any, and I'm sure there will be a lot, so.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thank you. Two immediate questions that come to thought, and I know these have been concerns for other people. So my first one, having to do with disposal. So obviously, there's going to be an increased amount of people walking around with cups outside. What is the plan to combat disposal, people just throwing their cups, you know, in the streets, on the sidewalk? What would be?
Yeah, so a lot of the cities in Ohio use disposable cups, so that was obviously an issue that they wanted to address right off the bat. We would hope that we would be able to use reusable cups to help combat that a little bit. But in some of the research that I've done, a lot of the cities hadn't noticed a significant increase in trash, actually. And then I think even with the addition of the reusable cups, I think we can help combat that. And I think, like I said, again, this is a trial, so I think we would kind of have to adjust as needed.
Yeah, of course. Second question, have you thought about preventative measures for, let's say, some, and I know this is kind of hypothetical, but like someone buys a cup and then they give it to their friend, you know, like, is there things you've thought of, maybe like when they buy a cup, they get a stamp or something? So I'm just trying to think of those preventative measures.
We've definitely thought about all the things, absolutely. And I think we can ask those kinds of questions all day long, and I think it's something that we, I guess if you want to chime in, I don't know.
Erin, I can help a little bit from the bar owner perspective. That's, that is a good question to get asked now, with or without DORA. That could happen right this second. This could happen with DORA. So I get the question. It makes perfect sense, but that's as apt to happen today downtown as it is if there's a DORA downtown. It doesn't make any difference, but the controls are the same, and those are well-enforced and everybody's licensed by the clerk. There's state law that influences those things, so those pieces are still there. This isn't adding liability as far as underage drinking or passing off a cup.
And there's a reason why I'm asking these questions, because I know we get it, you know, there's valid concerns, so I think people want to hear from you. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate you guys being here tonight. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for presenting to us. I got a couple of questions. One, in your presentation, you point out that you're hopeful or that you think that by having a DORA itself will increase the amount of, the actual number of events we have. Can you give me a 60-second expansion on how you think that just having this will increase our events? It seems to me like it'd be more of a, it's an add-on that we already would have, you know, that it would, in some eyes, enhance an event we already have, but I don't know how that would add more events.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a barrier when you're trying to plan an event downtown and you want to, like, I mean, maybe Jazz Fest could be an example, like, you have to navigate the whole open containers situation there if you want to serve beer and alcohol. So this helps alleviate that from anyone applying for an event downtown. So maybe rather than having it in a park, they'd want to have it in our downtown district. I know The Chamber formerly put on, you know, Live at Lunch and things like that. They don't do that anymore, but it might, for some of these things to come back, we'll do like a Jazz in the Square kind of series later on in the summer and fall, and I think it will just increase the amount of people who will be interested in hosting those kinds of events downtown.
Councilman Mugeraw, I can add to that a little bit if you want a little bit fidelity on it. Part of this for me is that there's, this is a nice way to help clarify and codify some of the things that already exists. So, for example, if you want to have an event in Opera House Square now, you could allow carers in Opera House Square. You could do anything about with alcohol, because the city of Oshkosh already exempts that, and you're allowed to drink alcohol in Opera House Square, but five centimeters away in Main Street, you're not. So these kinds of things help with that, and that does make event planning an awful lot easier and would absolutely entice people to do that. I can speak to it from the Jazz Fest perspective. We don't ever want to sell beer for Jazz Fest downtown, because we want people to patronize the businesses downtown. That's the point. So the economic development aspect of this is first and foremost, no matter what.
Okay, good answer. Secondly, and probably kind of a pointed question, you mentioned the Robert Brooks study, and there was a great presentation, good study, and a lot of things in there, right, that we should try to strive for. It seems as though, and prove me wrong or tell me I'm wrong, I got no problem being wrong, this seems like, it seems a little out of place. It seems a little out of step that this is one of the first things you're bringing to us in terms of trying to drive events downtown is allow wider consumption of alcohol. It seems like it should be fifth or 10th on the list and not one or two. Talk to me about that.
Sure. So we have done actually a lot of things within the Roger Brooks list of recommendations. A lot of them have been focused on beautification and haven't, like, needed council approval necessarily for anything like that. You know, we've done multiple mural installations last year. We had our utility boxes wrapped. We've actually fundraised and in partnership with Visit Oshkosh, the Community Foundation, and the J.E.K. Foundation, we're able to have a horticulturist at the city to take care of our downtown and make sure it's a place where that's beautiful for visitors and our residents. What else? We created a flower pot pilot program. So, you know, before, our businesses couldn't have flower pots outside, so they couldn't have this nice curb appeal that you like to see downtown. So we worked with city staff to create a pilot program so that businesses are allowed to do that now, and that'll go through the summer. We also received funding from the Convention and Visitors Bureau for a blade sign program. We started that last week and already have three applicants for it. Essentially, it's a 70, we will cover 75% of the total project cost, up to $1,000, for businesses to have flower pots outside and blade signs on their businesses. So I could probably keep going.
So it's not the first thing.
That makes the sixth, right? Six or seven, just something like that.
Fair point.
We actually did submit an ARPA proposal for the plaza concept as well. So we would like to see something more substantial downtown, but I think this is a really affordable way to kind of generate some activity, and we can just see how it goes, and if it doesn't work out, it's not like we put a huge capital investment into something, so.
And the low cost of entry is a good point here, because obviously, we, Jessie went through the finances of the bid ahead of time. There is not a lot of money for us to do things like this that generate this type of impact. For whatever it's worth, I can tell you that, if Mark were here, he could affirm this, because he and I just talked about it last night. because he and I just talked about it last week. This concept had come, Mark and I had the conversations about this exact concept at events like this on Main Street in different manners for the last three or four years in a row. And we've never gotten past the barrier of what the state allows and what the state doesn't allow. Thankfully, City Attorney weighed in at this time and found the chapter that applies to what the state can and cannot do. And we found that in this case, well, it could have happened before, but in this case, and I think Lynn will back me up on that. But Chapter 125 does allow municipalities to allow what we are asking in this instance. And it only never got to you before, because nobody bothered to push it that far. We never got down, we never got down the path far enough to get to you. So we're glad we're here.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, just three questions I've been getting from community members. First, has there been any thought to shutting down, shutting down streets? Kind of like a First Friday type of an atmosphere as part of this project. The second question is about the Saturday hours. The main question I've gotten is, hey, you know, this is supposed to draw people downtown. People are already downtown, farmer's market, it's already a draw. Why not start this after farmer's market is, is over? And the third thing is, why, why wouldn't this create a permanent pub crawl situation downtown?
What was the, can you repeat the first question?
Yeah, has there been any thought to shutting down Main Street or other streets in that area on Friday or Saturday night to create more of a festival atmosphere?
Yeah, I think that that's talked about a lot, and it's kind of a chicken and the egg thing. Right now, you know, if we were to shut the street down, I don't think that we would have the activity that would make it feel like it's that lively atmosphere. So to me, having a DORA helps that happen, so that eventually we could have a scenario like that.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, the Saturday hours, the second question?
Yes. To me, the, having the DORA during the farmer's market only adds to the experience for visitors of downtown. I mean, I think bars, like, I will use Bar 430 or any of our downtown restaurants are super busy during those, those times. So they're, like I said, able to serve more people. And I think it just adds to, you know, you can grab your drink and go enjoy the market. I think it just adds to that experience.
Councilmember Ford, I can add to that a little bit, not to interrupt you, sorry. But Jesse reached out to almost every business on Main Street and in this area to get their feedback, and that's been overwhelmingly positive. My first ask on this was to the farmer's market, because it does impact them directly, and they're immensely in favor of this, very happy about it. And they think of it, I mean, you know, I think it's the best market in the world already. They think this adds to that. And the next conversation I had was with the tavern league and the bar owners who would be providing the alcohol. And they seem to be in favor of this very much, so also. So we, we did exactly what you're, you're hearing and made sure we asked those questions of the people who would be directly impacted and involved.
Okay, and will this create a permanent pub crawl type situation? In other words, would, are you concerned it would ruin a family atmosphere?
So after speaking to some of the cities in Ohio, they actually, most of them had the ability to retract the DORA. So if we were to see a situation like that happening, the city would be able to, you know, stop it for a weekend that traditionally has something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's an imperative point, Councilman, is that whether it's pilot program or whether this winds up being an addendum to an ordinance that already exists, that portion has to exist, especially with regards to, pub crawl is one. This would be not in, in play when there's an event where it could be negative.
Yeah.
The additional part would be if there are events that don't want alcohol, but they want to use Main Street, you need to retain the right to say that you can't drink in those events also, because the cert process would still come first with this. And then this is something that would help enhance that. The broader philosophical point of the question, I think, is great, because if this is something that does not drive economic development and does not drive vibrancy downtown, we don't want it to happen. So it's a chicken and egg in that respect also. If it doesn't work, you have to be able to pull the plug, and it can't be, and we, Mark and I have talked about this at length as well. The bid won't own this in the end. You will own this, we will all own this. It'll be some sort of change or pilot. So the bid will not have the ability to pull the plug. So the city needs to be able to pull the plug if it goes poorly. And we would expect that if it's not driving economic development, you would do that on our behalf. Makes sense?
Yep.
So it's one of those where you have to wait for not much, what might go bad, but if it doesn't go right, you need to be able to stop doing it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thanks. Just a couple of questions and concerns. I'm wondering, and maybe this can come after the meeting, but if there's any specific data from some of the communities in Ohio or other communities that have done this, both on data to, to show the economic development that it, it caused or correlated with? And also, were, what were the issues with safety? Were there increased incidences? Are there negative sides of the data?
Yeah, so I did, I think I contacted four cities in Ohio that are doing it. I reached out to Chattanooga, Tennessee, Sturgeon Bay in Wisconsin that does it. All very positive about the DORA. I did ask about policing thing and safety. I asked kind of how they handled those situations. A lot of them were super, super friendly and said they'd be willing to talk to our, you know, police chief. So I think they had, there was a, I don't know that there's any necessarily, like, any numbers for economic development. I could reach back out to them and see, or just see if Ohio has anything about how DORAs have increased economic development for their state. Yeah, I don't know if I answered all of the question, but.
Yeah, and, and I think it's just, you know, making sure if, if we were to implement this, will it actually prove successful? I think on the, the enforcement side and safety, are you expecting there to need to be any kind of increased enforcement or presence of law enforcement to make sure that the rules of DORA are being enforced? And if so, and, and maybe that's a, a conversation for us, how do we cover that?
I think there has to be maybe a couple more conversations with city staff about just what expectations are. I don't know that we need to have police necessarily present more so than they already are now before we even know what the effects of the DORA are going to be.
Lindsay, I, I looked long and hard for comparable events to this one, because it's not an event, it's a thing. The best example I found happens to be the Brews in the Bay, which is a city event, which happens in a designated area. Certainly, DORA doesn't imply drinking first. Brews in the Bay definitely does. So that's a beer-centric event put on by the city in a designated area. There are, as I understand it, no designated extra police to that event, no extra expense in policing to that event. And they have had no issues as far as they told me when I asked the question. So for, from an example's sake and to be a precedent, there is at least that one, and that's yours already. You've done that one, so you guys know better than we do. And we, that was, no, I don't know that, I didn't get official numbers, but there were thousands of people there last year when that happened. If that happened downtown Oshkosh or DORA, I would be blown away. I don't think that's the case. I think we're talking about hundreds of people who enjoy this, not thousands of people like that one was. So it's a good case to compare.
And I think, one other question, will there, are you planning to do any sort of training with, you know, bar staff and how to enforce this, or what the rules are? And what does that look like, you know, safe serving and all of that?
Yeah, so we haven't totally put anything formally together yet, just because we don't know if it's something that's approved. But that was at my last bid board meeting, that was on my next steps for the DORA after. If, if this gets approved, how are we going to make sure that the restaurants are informed about how to serve? How the cup system works, all of that. So yes, definitely, next steps for us.
Thank you.
So I'd like to ask some questions. Thank you to all my councilmembers for bringing these, these questions forward. First of all, I think your acronym might need to change to A-DORA, being that it is specific to adults. And I, I do feel like that does take away a bit from the family, at least the underadult age in some regards. But my question's really to, A, you know, what are the potential additional, additional policing costs? And also, what guarantees or how, first of all, how many establishments would benefit from this? And would they commit to the cleanup afterwards? Because otherwise, the shoulder neighborhoods, we already bear the burden, living a block from Main Street, of cleaning up broken beer bottles and, you know, alcohol-related things without the DORA. So, you know, how many of those locations will benefit? And will they commit to the cleanup the next morning, you know, so that folks can enjoy a clean, tidy neighborhood?
Yeah, I guess it's hard to say at this time who, who will benefit. We just don't know the effects of, of the DORA yet. I think we have a great business, we have great business owners downtown, great property owners who are doing these things already. I have faith that they will do that after a DORA weekend, but, yeah, I don't know if you have anything as a business owner downtown.
Seeing as how you're talking about every weekend, you know, from June to November, you know, that, that's three days a week and 250. But I guess the other question I have, and this might be a question for City Attorney or perhaps Chief Smith, how does this differ, you know, why can't a special event handle this? If we're talking about trying to enhance things, how does this differ from an event that no longer is special if it's all the time?
There's, there are state laws that govern the port, the amount of times an event can take place that involves alcohol. That was the portion that changed, and that, when you were here for Wine Walk and when Wine Walk, when Geller Walk stopped being able to serve wine, that's when that implementation happened at the state level that said nonprofits need to be involved, there's X amount of things per year that each nonprofit can do. So this can't be done in a manner with a, a special event only, because there are not enough numerances to make that happen. It's just not possible. So this has to involve the, the exemption that exists in Chapter 125 exists, I think, for a purpose, is to do this kind of thing. That's how other states have done it so far. The exemption that would allow special events to do it is there, and that got limited to a certain amount per year and driven by nonprofit. And the types you can sell, what kind of cups, where it can be, what kind of boundary, all that kind of stuff. So our cert follows those laws. This is different than that, in that it resides an awful lot higher up the chapter and for different purposes entirely.
So who would, who would pay for the additional policing and enforcement?
We don't know, I mean, that's a great question. We don't know that there would need to be any additional policing or enforcement. Every city, I believe, that we spoke to in Ohio did not add any dollars for policing for enforcement. And to my last example, the one that the city puts on that's a much larger event, that's alcohol-centric, does not require any, any extra policing, and they don't, you don't charge yourselves for that one. So we don't think this needs any extra, but we also don't know the answer. I mean, it hasn't been told to us.
All right, does anybody else have any additional, oh, sorry, Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, Jesse, great, great presentation. You would have been better off leaving him at home. But some, some of the emails that I've received, mostly concerning the university and our legendary status as a party town from way back in the Johnny Carson days. I mean, I, I'd like to really keep an eye on this. I mean, do you, do you agree that, that there should not be a university-type college crowd thing? And, and then my other concern is kind of the size of the communities that you guys are using. For example, Sturgeon Bay, I love that example and everything, but some, some of those other things. Can you, can you kind of talk to those two points for me, please?
Yes, so first, I forget what the first question was, I'm sorry.
The university.
Oh, yes, okay. So I think it just goes back to, like, if, if this ends up being some sort of pub crawl scenario, we, we don't want that either. Obviously, the, the goal is economic development here, and if we're, we're having that end result, we ultimately tried the DORA and it, and it wasn't for us, and that's okay. But at least we tried, so. And then second question.
The size of the communities and things like that, so.
So like I said, I researched four cities in Ohio. I actually wrote down the populations before I came here, up here. So Marietta was the first one. I follow them, they do a really great job with their downtown. That's how I came across the whole concept in general. They're a smaller city, that's 13,000. So then I decided, obviously, as a city of 13,000, Oshkosh is a different animal than that. So I researched Dublin, Troy and Canton, Ohio. Dublin is about 50,000, Troy is about 30,000, and Canton is about 70,000, all relatively close in size to Oshkosh. All of those cities actually allow multiple districts. So cities, I believe, above 50,000 allow for up to six districts. And then also, I recently reached out to Chattanooga, Tennessee, and they're a city of 181,000. So definitely all very positive responses, like I mentioned, at all sizes, so.
One, one last follow-up. So Sturgeon Bay kind of interests me, because obviously, you know, everybody's got ideas in other states and everything. Sturgeon Bay is close to us. I mean, they're very much a summertime entertainment community, lots of water and everything. So just share with us and everybody about Sturgeon Bay for two minutes or less. You know, I, I think that's the comparable we're always, we're all kind of looking at, because it's close.
Yeah, they created the concept in 2020 in response to COVID, to allow people who are waiting for restaurants to be able to grab a drink and then walk around outside while they waited for limited seating. They, obviously, as things went back to normal and things got busier, they loved it so much and had no issues with it. So they can, have been continuing it ever since. So they have a area kind of around the water, just like us, like we would be proposing, so.
All right. Just to add to your first point, the college part is something that is really important. It's a valid concern. A couple of points on that that have come up for people asking me also. The college part, I think, is addressed pretty well by the hours, Jesse's. But together, this ends at 10 o'clock. That's not when college kids are downtown drinking. That, that is the intent of the hours ending when they end, that's the whole point. But to your first question about the, the other areas in the university, that'll be up to you guys to figure out and to lean into how this gets implemented and what the, what goes with it. Be it a pilot program that is pretty well laid out now, or an addendum in ordinance, but it's not something you'll be able to manage by exemption in the future. You can't pick who wins and loses with this, because it'll, it'll be a policy to put together, and people will have to come here, we put a lot of time into this, it takes a lot of effort to get in front of you as it is. But people will have to come here and present their DORA region to you, and it'll have to be approved or not approved.
And I just want to point out, the majority of the questions we asked are emails we're getting and the concerns of the community, so, yeah. So thank you both very much.
Great, thank you.
I guess, just one other follow-up, and that is, so there was some discussion about the, the bars kind of filling up and being able to serve more and serve faster. It seems that many of the taverns downtown already have, like, outdoor seating or side yards or things of that nature. So I'm not quite sure how the street ends up making any difference for their turnover capacity. But I think folks would be really interested in seeing, again, numbers and, and, you know, what some outcomes have been. But again, you know, looking at the potential for, I guess, cleanup as well as, there was another question that I had regarding the time. So would a consideration, if you were to be asked to look at a trial for, or a pilot for one night a week, let's say a Friday night, as opposed to Thursday, Friday and Saturday all day into the evening, you know, is, is that something that you would look at? And then maybe not necessarily from June to November, but maybe, you know, June to Labor Day or something like that. Is that something that's been talked about?
I guess we haven't necessarily talked about that. I think there's a lot of time, and, you know, if it does end up getting approved, there'll be some investment in it. So I think we want to make it worthwhile to do. You know, if we're going to invest in the cups and things like that, having it Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I think makes more sense for us, and that's why we thought about it that way. But I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but.
No, I mean, Thursday is there primarily for Water Fest, because it would be lovely if you could get a beverage in Wal-Mart's Water Fest, that'd be great. That does drive vibrancy and economic development. It's a good thing, because as people are currently buying a beer at Bar 430 and walking to the Lee Jemba Theater, because they can. So that would be helpful. And Jesse's right, I mean, the, the more demonstrable data you have going into this is better. So one day, may not be better data to analyze after the fact than what we're asking for. And there's a reason for Thursday to be there and for Saturday morning to be there for the farmer's market.
Thank you so much. Do councilmembers want to ask any questions of City Attorney or Chief of Police? I see he's back here on this. Or save that for later, another time. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we are at public hearings, the first one being Resolution 22204, approved final resolution for special assessment for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, new and rehabilitation, driveway apron, sanitary sewer main and laterals, new and relay, water main and laterals, new and relay, and storm sewer mains and laterals, new and relay, relating to contract number 2201. That includes Bowen Street, A, Bowen Street 100 feet south of East Murdock Avenue to Anchorage Court. Do we have a motion and a second on 22204?
So moved.
Second.
You need to read it three times for the public hearing, and then it goes to you.
Do we have anyone registered to speak on this item? We do not, okay. Second reading, Resolution 22204, approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway apron, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, and storm sewer mains and laterals relating to contract number 2201 for Bowen Street. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak to this? And our third and final reading, Resolution 22204, approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway apron, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, storm sewer mains and laterals relating to contract number 2201 for Bowen Street. to contract number 2201 for Bowen Street. Okay.
I make a motion again.
I'll second again.
All right. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Actually, one moment, please. City Attorney, I'd like to turn over the reading of the public hearings to Deputy Mayor procedurally. I'm losing my voice here.
Oh.
Sorry. And I feel like coughing fit coming on, so.
Yep, as long as you read it three times.
Sounds good. Yell at me if I don't. Next one up, Resolution 22-205, approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveways and aprons, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, storm sewer mains and laterals relating to contract 22-04, Algoma Boulevard, Vine Avenue, High Avenue, and Vacated Black Hawk Street. Do we have anyone registered to speak to that?
We do.
Excellent.
Cheryl Lorich?
Come on up.
Sorry if I said that wrong.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I'm here to speak on the special assessments going on in the Algoma District. Kind of bewildered that I have to be here. I feel I should start with the fact that this is a continued, I think, 20-year discussion in our city. And I'm standing here today not just for myself, but for the people who came before me and for possibly the people who come after me. So I am not just one person. I am one of a 20-year discussion. Some of them are no longer here. They've moved on. I've talked to people. Other people, I feel, from my conversations have just grown tired and weary and can't fight for something after fighting for so long. So the special assessments, in my opinion, though, are a byproduct of a bigger issue in this city, which I kind of see as a, for lack of a better word, and with all due respect, a political or policy paralysis. So to circle back to that, I guess I'll start with what I kind of thought about as I thought about how to approach the subject, and that is what the purpose and what the presence of the common counsel are, is, and also what a special assessment is. So the common counsel, I actually sent you all an email and in kind wrote me back, what is the mission statement of the common counsel? So I'll just read that. "To create a thriving and sustainable community, offering abundant opportunities for work and life, while providing goods and services in pursuit of a safe and vibrant community." What is a special assessment? It's a means to amount, I'm sorry, got to get my readers on. It's a means and an amount entered into the tax rule as an assessment against real property to compensate, and this is all, just kind of paraphrased, all are part of the cost of public work or improvements which benefit the property. Special assessments in this city, they seem fair and equitable on paper. They're all based on lot size. But I think we all understand that in practice they are not fair. So how do we call something a special assessment when we have been discussing it for 20 years? Should we not call it, is it not better called, a yearly or routine assessment? We are continually, year after year, unable to cover the cost of the most basic of our city needs. The thing that connects us is now dividing us, our roads. Ah, let's see, where am I at here? I feel that the way, the spirit of the law of the special assessment, because it is, it's a legal law. In Wisconsin, any city could use the special assessment to pay for things. Many cities don't. I believe that's because the way we have begun to use it has become unprincipled. It is meant to be used occasionally, not yearly. I feel that when we are discussing what the common counsel should do in providing a sustainable opportunity for this city, we are not, what's the word I'm looking for? I apologize, I didn't prepare really well tonight. We are not promoting a sustainable community when we are placing huge bills on individual owners. The spirit is not being honored of the special assessment nor the common counsel when we proceed the way that we do, year after year. So I'm asking the common counsel, I noticed that in the last meeting, the special, the transportation utility fee, which was brought together a few years ago through business owners and homeowners, has been tabled now for two years. So I'm urging the common counsel to get that into an area where we can at least vote on it in trial. We need to do something for the community because even on the way here, I was, a situation just happened on my way here and I was going to share it. I can tell you my sob story. You've heard all the sob stories. You understand that. My neighbor called me on my way to the meeting. She said, "There's two kids out in your yard. They're picking up the sticks that are out there, the big stakes that the workers put out there." So I went out there and I said, "You know, guys, don't take out those sticks. We need them in place. The city workers need them. Be safe out here. There's a lot of, you know, gravel and the machines and everything." And they're like, "Is that your home?" "Yes, that's my home." "Are you, are you doing, are you having to pay..." The kids, 10 years old and 11 years old, I asked them. They asked me, "Are you paying for your roads?" I said, "I am." They're like, "We don't think it's fair." I said, "It's, I don't think it's fair either." I said, "How interesting that you're saying that." And they, and I said, "Well, what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to go to the city and I'm going to tell them how I feel about that. And I'm going to tell them what you said." Because I can't believe we're having this conversation. One of the children told me their city, that their family wants to move, but they don't have enough money, so they can't do that. So this is just everyday conversations. Everyone I've talked to is feeling attacked and crushed. It destabilizes people. It takes them from the space that they are supposed to feel most safe and secure and it makes them feel less safe and secure. So I'm just asking that the common counsel, please, try to get this to a vote sooner than later.
Thank you.
I hope that's okay. I don't know how this is going to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lorich. Second reading. Oh, sorry, go right ahead. I'll sneak him again.
Michelle Bead?
Michelle? Come on up.
Hello.
Welcome.
My name's Michelle Beadie and I live in Oshkosh here. And I don't quite know how this works, but am I allowed to ask you some questions as well or do I just make a statement?
Generally, this would be a time where you would make a statement to us.
Okay. All righty. Well, basically, it's about the special assessments. And I don't understand how we can have a budget and all of our property taxes go into a pool where we pay for our schools, we pay for our city employees, whatever the case is, and live in a budget, like all of us have to live in a budget. I can't go to the store and pick out lobster and say to the person behind me, "You got to pay for this." It doesn't work that way. So my biggest thing is, is that I feel there has to be a different way that we can approach this problem because I see people taking their kids' college funds that they've raised their kids all the way to 18 years old, and now they're having to pay this bill. Or like in my case, which is an added thing, that I have a $25,000 assessment. If I put it on the 15-year plan, I pay you $6,700 more. How does that help me out? And really, as their mission to create everything sustainable, it doesn't help you out either. So I just want to know how we can solve this. And the only thing that everybody has talked about, which Cheryl touched base on, was the transportation fee. And I know a lot of people, like us, sitting out here, we hear the word tax and guards go up. And it's a scary word, but I think you, as the city council, needs to get that information out there of why it would be better for us. I would gladly pay $200 more a year forever than get stuck with a $25,000 wham-bam-thank-you-ma'am kind of a bill. And I don't understand how y'all can sit up there and feel that it's just okay because it betters the community. It's hard on the community. There's people with, you know, older people with fixed budgets. And do they buy prescriptions or do they pay their, you know, their assessment? And it's really tough, I think, on the older people. I have great aunts that live in town here and they're scared. There's three people on Algoma Boulevard that are, one person has already sold their house just because of this. They've lived here 20, 30 years and they're afraid of this happening again. Or like having sidewalks done three years ago that we all paid for and now we're ripping them all up again. So it's very, it's very hard for us to understand, which I know I don't understand all your federal and state rules, and I know there's a lot of them. But there has to be some logic in it down the road so we can all come together and feel good about it. I don't mind paying for a new road, but I just think there should be a better way to do it. My, my other situation is, is that I don't understand, when I did the calculations off of your sheet that we all got in the mail, and I'm looking at it and I'm trying to understand, and I know now that, you know, you go by the square foot, or not the square foot, it's the feet that we all have as far as our property is concerned. So when I did a little math, I'm being charged $100 or $250 a foot because I have approximately 100 feet. The university is being charged $160 a foot. I don't understand that at all. So I'd like some answers on that maybe down the road because they have the ability to pass this cost on, whether it's through tuition or parking fee passes, just like a landlord would pass maybe a fee onto a renter. Residential people don't have that. We don't have that ability to pass it on. You know, so there again, it's, I don't understand how they could be being charged less when I'm assuming all their concrete pipes and everything are much larger than a residential, you know, situation is. So I would hope that we could come into a better situation and we can, like Cheryl said, maybe get this tax moving a bit faster so we can maybe all come together and be proud of our common counsel, and I'm not implying that we're not, but prouder maybe of them, that we all work together. But I think it's very important for the common counsel to try and get that information that we do have because there is a whole pamphlet. I copied it off, off of the computer, off of your site. So I know there is research out there and it makes a lot of sense as to making this a better place for, instead of it being us against you or you against us, making it better so we can say, "We all work together in this and we got it done." And hopefully, we can do that. That's my spiel.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, you have her information, when she registered, that's correct? Well, she registered outside address. City staff, we'll have somebody from Public Works reach out regarding your question. That's a good question and it needs to be answered and we'll make sure somebody reaches out.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else registered to speak to this one? Okay. Second reading, Resolution 22-205, approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, storm sewer mains and laterals relating to contract 22-04, Algoma Boulevard, Vine Avenue, High Avenue, Vacated Black Hawk Street. I'll take a motion in a second.
Just a correction, 2205.
Excuse me, 2205. One more reading, right?
20, Resolution 2205.
Oh, it is. Oh, it's all right. Approved final resolution, my bad, rookie up here. Approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, storm sewer mains and laterals relating to contract 22-04, Algoma Boulevard, Vine Avenue, High Avenue, and Vacated Black Hawk Street. Now we'll take a motion in a second.
Still moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. Mr. Robby, does the, is that number that the resident shared, that 150 per foot, does that shake out for the university compared to the residential?
There is, I'd have to look at the specifics, but the university being an institutional property would be, the assessment would be calculated at the residential two category, which generally has a higher rate per linear foot for the street than single-family residential does.
And there's also probably different lateral charges underground.
Yeah, given the significant length the university property has, there are significantly fewer laterals per linear foot than there are for residential properties. So that's probably where the difference is coming from is they have significantly fewer lateral and thus lower lateral costs overall, but probably have higher pavement, street pavement costs.
Okay. Can you have someone from your department follow up with Ms. Beadie?
Yes.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. If there's no other discussion, we'll call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next up, Resolution 22-206, approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, storm sewer mains and laterals relating to contract 22-05, East Lincoln Avenue, Rosalia Street. Is there anyone registered to speak?
Chris Walker or Walker, Chris?
Welcome. Well, I think a lot of this has been said a lot of times over a lot of years. And here I am and we are still facing something that I think you can agree, the majority of people that live here and are homeowners here do not feel comfortable with, and that is the rising cost of these assessments. I, in watching our street being worked on, spoke with someone whose street was done in 2015 on Irving. He had two properties at that time and anecdotally, it cost him 15 grand in 2015. Here we are seven years later. I've got two homes on Lincoln Avenue, got a $30,000 assessment, to include both of those. I realize that the interest in changing to a wheel tax or something as Alton has done, it's been effective there. It was voted down by this council, apparently, in 2019. To be subject to just receive mail that says, "You now owe $30,000," I was not a person in this room that would not be damaged by that reality. Here's a $30,000 bill. Don't look at the rest of your year or what things cost, what difficulties you faced, what charges those will cost you for the rest of your life. These are new ones. I feel that it's important... I feel that it's important to make just a couple of points and I respect that governance is difficult and the decisions are difficult, but they have to be made with some kind of level of consideration of the impact on the community. And I don't feel that there's any evidence of that here and I'm really surprised. We have small rental business, so we have five, you know, five, uh, buildings. Two of those we converted from drug houses to being great neighbors. That happens in this town. Our neighbor on either side of those two houses, which we bought in the last two years, thank us every time they see us, okay? We do something good in this community. That is a heck of a bill. Doesn't seem responsible, doesn't seem thoughtful, doesn't seem fair, doesn't seem like a professional addressing of the reality of increasing costs. If they increased in seven years from 15 grand to 30 grand in, in the case of someone with two homes, just a vague comparison, um, what's going to happen in seven years from now? It's not sustainable. It's not a intelligent, thoughtful way to handle what every community must do, which is address these terrible roads and the problems that, in getting them repaired. A secondary reality, I don't want to take too much of your time, but, uh, the decisions that have been made for replacing aprons and slabs of sidewalk that then get redundantly torn back out and replaced again two years later. Now, I met with a city engineer, I understand the reality that, uh, there's a 10-year timeline on the insurance policy and that the city's meant to go over the sidewalks every 10 years and in order to be covered, they have to address those aprons. That's the answer I was given. Unfortunately, what that meant on CP Street last year, what it meant on, uh, our street this year, is that that work was done twice. Now, if you talk about budgets and intelligent fiscal decisions and the excuses that our insurance policy requires us every 10 years to address this and if the CP Street hasn't been, uh, scheduled and isn't going to be redone that year, then we're going to do knowingly just what's been done on all of these streets for all these years. We're going to replace the apron, we're going to replace the slabbed sidewalk, and then we're going to come back two years and do it again. And I think you all know that this happens, right? I think it's pretty clear that everyone in town knows that this happens. It doesn't make much sense as far as how good of a steward of our tax payments are. You know, I've got five houses I pay taxes on and we've got no problems in this town except how do we face this bill when it comes to Wagu next year? You know? We can't pay another 15 grand. And I don't understand the decision that leaves this in our laps when there are very viable solutions to this. It's not sustainable because the, we know that the costs will increase. Uh, if this is what your insurance requires, that you do this disposable aprons, oh, come on. You need new insurance, right? You need something that doesn't put you in a position to redo the apron two years later. It's a lot of money and even though I may not be charged twice for that, that affects your budget on all things related to how we expand this tax. I have to believe that you are all in a position to care as all of your fellow citizens do about these things. I have to believe that you all have similarly capable minds to say this, this can't be sustained. We can't send somebody a $60,000 bill for streets. It's not like the, uh, income has increased or some other aspect has improved to the point of being able to pay that large amount of money. So I guess that's really what I'm getting to. The last couple of points I'll make and then I'll leave it, uh, is that, um, you know, things like, uh, being on a bus route, you know, that changes the use of this particular street as well. That could be a factor to be considered. And just basically, uh, how is this the best way that we can do this? If seven years ago it cost someone 15 grand to do two homes on Irving Street and now it's costing me 30, that's without the lateral lead line replacement stuff. And I, and we have more homes, we gotta put windows in, we gotta put doors in, we gotta make them habitable, we gotta increase the ability to make them viable in today's market. You know, these houses are old, they need to be brought back and that requires investment. That's what we do. That's what we do for a living. We can't afford to do that one we get for this kind of bill. And I think you want your community to have affordable, caring, good quality homeowners that are running this kind of business, but that is quickly diminishing under a climate such as this. So I thank you for your time and that's the best I can do for now.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thanks.
Is anyone else registered to speak on this one?
Not on this side of.
Thank you very much. Second reading, approved final resolution, uh, sorry, Resolution 22 dash 206, approve final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway, uh, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, storm sewer mains and laterals relating to contract number 22 dash 05, East Lincoln Avenue, Rosalia Street. Third and final reading, approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, storm sewer mains and laterals relating to contract number 22 dash 05, East Lincoln Avenue, Rosalia Street. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, if you'll call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrow.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next up, Resolution 22 dash 207, approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, storm sewer mains and laterals relating to contract number 22 dash 07, Oregon Street. Is there anyone registered to speak to this one?
Not this time.
Is anybody in the audience? Second reading, Resolution 22 dash 207, approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, storm sewer mains and laterals relating to contract number 22 dash 07, Oregon Street. Third and final reading, Resolution 22 dash 207, approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, storm sewer mains and laterals relating to contract number 22 dash 07, Oregon Street. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, if you'll call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrow.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 22 dash 208, approved final resolution for special assessment for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, storm sewer mains and laterals relating to contract number 22 dash 13, Whitsel Avenue, Maryden Road. Is there anyone to speak to this?
No one's registered.
Okay. Second reading, Resolution 22 dash 208, approved final resolution for special assessment for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, storm sewer mains and laterals relating to contract number 22 dash 13, Whitsel Avenue, Maryden Road. Third and final reading, approved final resolution for special assessment for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, storm sewer mains and laterals relating to contract number 22 dash 13, Whitsel Avenue, Maryden Road. I'll take a motion in a second for 22 dash 208.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, if you'll call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrow.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Final public hearing, Resolution 22 dash 209, approved final resolution for special assessments for storm sewer laterals relating to contract number 22 dash 20, various locations. Is anyone registered to speak on this?
No.
Okay. Second reading, Resolution 22 dash 209, approved final resolution for special assessments for storm sewer laterals relating to contract number 22 dash 20, various locations. Third and final reading, Resolution 22 dash 209, approved final resolution for special assessments for storm sewer laterals relating to contract number 22 dash 20, various locations. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Council member forward.
Yeah, I'm recusing myself from this one because I'm one of the properties being assessed
Any other discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk will call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Present.
Mugrow.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye, charge him double.
Paul Mary.
Aye, charge him triple.
Next up on the agenda, assistance statements to council. Citizens are able to address council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Is there anyone registered for assistance statements?
We do. Ginger Buick.
Ginger, if you're here and would like to come on up?
Yep. Can you hand me the mic?
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I'm Ginger Buick. I come before the city council tonight as a very concerned citizen. On Saturday, May 14th, 2022, I had a medical emergency and was taken to Aurora Medical Center. When I was ready to be discharged at 2:30 PM, the nursing staff called a cabulance. Cabulance seemed like our call to them was not important. They said they were sending someone that could take up two and over. An hour later, I requested the nursing staff to call again to ask when I would be picked up. Cabulance dispatch said it could be another hour. The nursing staff was on the phone talking to cabulants, coming up to me with updates that seemed like we were negotiating a contract. At 5 o'clock PM, a cab arrived to take me home. I stated that the nursing staff requested a cabulance. The driver radioed dispatch about the mix-up and they stated that they were going to send someone soon. Maybe another hour or two, wait at 6 PM. When the driver left, I was not feeling my best. From this whole ordeal, I started calling my friends to see if one of them could pick me up. Not the safest option for someone that uses a custom fitted wheelchair. A friend is picking me up. How would you like to be sitting in a manual wheelchair that does not have the support that your personal custom fitted public wheelchair has for two to three hours? I feel that my rights as a person with a disability do not matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginger.
So is Jim Collins in the room?
He's not, he's not in the room, but I, I personally discussed this issue with him this afternoon.
Okay.
And I just want to say, Ms. Buick, that I'm, I'm sorry that this happened to you. Um, the, um, cabulants is a contractor of the city and, and we haven't had a, an opportunity to discuss this issue with them yet, but I can assure you that we will. And, um, we certainly, your rights do matter and, um, this is something that we'll look into and try to address with them as soon as we're able to.
And Fitz, you'll follow up with all of us on, on the outcome of this?
Yes, I will.
And my email is in the, um, statements.
Yes, yep, we received your email. I had a chance to take a look at it too and, and again, um, you know, on behalf of City Cab, you know, I apologize for what happened.
Thank you.
Ginger, do you have a ride this evening?
Yes, I do. My, um, agent brought me down at 6 o'clock and will be taking me home and helping me, um, get into bed. Thank you.
And thank you for your patience in waiting to speak.
Thank you. City clerk, is there anyone else registered to speak?
There is, um, Patricia Deener.
Welcome, Ms. Deener. Hi, um, I haven't been around for a couple of years because of the virus and all this stuff, but I see there's a lot of changes in the city of Oshkosh and my husband is home, he's had surgery, and we've been driving around and we noticed that, um, our favorite fishing place has been taken away. You guys put a walkway and I understand people want to walk. Is there going to be any roads there or is it going to be apartments? Are they going to build a deck there up a main street to the Pioneer Drive? Um, it wasn't just us that fished there. My father-in-law fished there for many, many years. There's a lot of people that fished there and, I mean, I don't know where to park. We probably have to park past this is office on the corner, that big brick building. I don't know if we can park on that road, then you have to carry stuff. And, um, a few weeks ago I wasn't here either, it was Earth Day and I was downtown and I was amazed, the people that were out picking up garbage, bags and bags of garbage, and that's awesome, especially even behind the stores. And so I waited a couple of weeks and I thought, well, I'm going to go out, it's Earth Day. There's no reason it has to look like this. You were talking about pub crawls. I used to live across the street. We had the pub crawl and everybody would drop beer bottles, they'd be up at our door. And so I went and took two five gallon pills and I did the railroad proper. And so I went and took two five gallon pills, and I did the railroad property. And you can imagine what I picked up. Beer bottles, whiskey bottles, metal, all that stuff. Our area, for the last month, a month and a half, people are hauling garbage on their trailer. They just let it go, let it go where it wants. And, um, we are tired of picking it up in our yard or on our terrace. And, um, so it was nice that people are out for Earth Day. One other question. Oh, it is Memorial Day coming up. I would like to honor all of our fallen police officers that I worked with that passed away, and I would like to honor all of our veterans for what they served in our country because that's what made our land free of the home and the burden.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deener. City clerk, is anyone else registered to speak?
Dan Hinton.
Kelly, before you, before you sneak off, can you just talk about parking a little bit? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off at the pass.
And the fishing.
Oh, no.
And the fishing, sure.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. So that is the new Riverwalk that is being installed, but as part of the Riverwalk, there are actually going to be areas for fishing where it's going to be kind of like bump outs off of the Riverwalk Trail, so there can be fishing along there. We know that is a very popular area, so there are going to be bump outs for fishing, and there will be a trailhead for like parking in that area. So there will be parking, and later this, probably this fall, early next year, Ninth Ave will be extended, so there will still be access back in that area. We're just in the middle of construction season right now, but it'll be a great amenity for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the explanation. Mr. Hinton?
Well, hello. I'm, uh, my name's Dan Hinton. I'm, I work for Winnebago County Human Services, and as a part of that job, I'm the Prevention Services Coordinator there. But as a part of that, I work with Breakwater, which is the, the outgrowth of the Heroin Task Force. It's specifically a drug-free communities grant, uh, community project that is specifically now targeting underage drinking. And so I'm here to, to speak a bit to the DORA idea, which I had to explain to virtually everybody I talk about, that it's not the Explora also. So it's kind of an odd name to me, too, but it's the way it can be. Anyway, Breakwater had a number of questions, some of which you probably received in email about the timing of it, especially the Saturday morning timing seems strange. There's a couple of tenants that Prevention for Underage Drinking works with in communities, and some of them are being trapped with this type of idea. One of them is availability, and of course, making it easier to get anything is going to make it more used. And acceptance of the product is also something. And so now walking around in public with it will certainly change the acceptability of such a thing. And that, that impacts, it's, it's not specifically designed about underage people, of course, but that does influence them, and I have some information about that, too. A second, a third one is affordability. Those kind of ideas have actually come from the, uh, the University of Wisconsin Medical College. They're, they're pretty adamant about us monitoring these types of events. So we're, we've gotten a couple of ideas from the, the CDC about some of these, and regulating the number and concentration of alcohol outlets, of course, is one of them, but enforcing prohibited, prohibited to, uh, sales to minors is, of course, something else. Without, uh, with the person not being visible to the, to the seller after a few steps, it could be a real challenge on the part of how, who did we actually sell to here? It could be a very difficult thing. And there's a really tremendous relationship between underage drinking behaviors, which is the interest of Breakwater, and adult beverage use. One of the things we have a really clear connection with is the, an increase in binge drinking amongst adults. And Wisconsin does not really compare to many other places in the United States with adult binge drinking, regardless of where we'd like to try to compare it to. If we increase that, that by five percent, a twelve percent increase in underage drinking will occur. Those things go together fairly well, and it's not necessarily something you can monitor in the summer. And so the idea that we can monitor it for a few months and then have a sense of what it will do will be some short-term, but not long-term outcomes. And of course, Wisconsin has a reputation that I talk about in the work I do routinely. Probably have to remind you about that. We're on a slippery slope, and this is greasing the wheels, if you will. So it's one of those things that Breakwater wanted to make sure that somebody else spoke about this in, in a sense that had a different view about it, and it's really a view towards young people and how that's influencing them. It's, uh, it's a different idea. All of the ideas of cause and effect apply here, too. And sometimes it's an effect that's not seen immediately. And of course, that's what everybody relies on councils to think about, is that long-term effect. So I'll leave you with that.
Mr. Hinton, could I ask a question?
Sure. I may not have an answer.
I'm sorry, I, I'm so, sorry for my voice, but, um, is there, I guess, data out there that talks about the impact to building recovery communities when you have these types of special situations?
Yeah, there is. We've, we've done some surveying of, of folks in recovery and also young people, and one of the things that we've gotten very clear information about from them is that they're unwilling to engage in activities where there's alcohol. It, it bothers them. It's, it's a detriment to them. And of course, in most states, if, if alcohol is sold, it's not a family event. In Wisconsin, that doesn't hold. But that may not be a good, a good way to define a family event. And so, yes, I think one of the things that folks should also consider is that it might attract some folks down that wouldn't normally be there, but it might also drive other folks away in a very real way. And, uh, so that's, that's the other piece of the pie, I think.
Well, thank you, mister. You bring up some very good points that, that we all need to make sure we're, we're considering in this discussion, so thank you for bringing those. Anyone else registered to speak?
Not under this item.
Thank you. Next up, consent agenda. Okay, I'll take a, um,
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, under consent, item twelve, resolution twenty-two two eleven. Barry Lebec would like to speak, under consent.
Mr. Lebec, come on up.
Hello, everybody. I'm speaking on the pool proposal for thirteen oh nine Oregon Street. This pool proposal is not about reinventing the wheel. It's about taking a successes, successful business model twenty-seven miles away in Kimberly, Wisconsin, and applying it here in Oshkosh. And to make it even better, we have sand volleyball and adding cabanas. Now Tanner's Bar is very successful in Kimberly with, you can tell just by their pool attendance. We propose to have the pool open Wednesday through Sunday, eleven to ten, adult pool only, under four foot deep. Cabana tents will be available for rent, which pairs nicely with our parent company, Oshkoshbars.com, which provides party bus rental for groups. Now regarding the concern of excessive drinking, the community knows that I'm an advocate against excessive drinking and drunk driving. I personally ran the bus safe ride program every Friday and Saturday night from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty, until the COVID crisis. We gave over ten thousand safe rides in three years. I think that should explain my stance on keeping drinking responsible. I personally drove that bus. Currently at the HQ, we offer free cab rides home through the Tavern League Safe Ride Program anytime, any day. Add in this pool is about creating the atmosphere, tanning, tiki bar, sand volleyball, cabanas. It sounds relaxing and fun, and I hope you all agree. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Do you have any questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other public comment, I will take a motion and a second. So move.
Second.
I need to, I need to remove, do I need to do that before the motion and second, or can I do it after?
You can do it whenever.
Okay. Motion and second for call the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on any consent agenda items?
I'm sorry, I missed who was the motion and second.
I have the motion.
Aaron and Lindsay. I need to pull resolution twenty-two dash two one six for a separate, for a separate vote. If there's no discussion on the balance, we'll call the roll on consent agenda minus twenty-two dash two one six.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Period six.
Resolution twenty-two dash two one six, approve appointments to various boards and commissions. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
I need to move to amend.
To divide.
Excuse me, to divide, uh, the approvals and appointments. I would need to pull, I guess it would be, we're going to call this, A is going to be the balance of everything, B will be me dividing out Lindsey Mugrower to the library board. I have a conflict I should probably avoid on that one. Additionally, I'd like to also divide out one more, turning into, uh, section C or number, letter C, Mr. Stevenson to the RDA for a separate vote as well. If I move for that, would there be any seconds?
Second.
Any discussion on the division?
Would you like to share the purpose for the division for item C for Stevenson?
I would like to have that as a separate up or down vote, and I can provide more detail on why, once it's up or down, or once it's on the floor for its, its action.
All right, so we're looking at three different segments here.
Yes. Segment A would be for everything else. Segment B is the division of Lindsey Mugrower to library board, and segment C would be Mr. Joe Stevenson, RDA. We've got a motion and a second for the divide. When the clerk is ready, she can call the roll on the vote to divide. No worries.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Period six.
So, uh, do I, uh, do I need, how do I want to handle the, the segment A? What's the proper procedure that's?
You would need a motion and a second for everything besides Lindsey and, um, Joe.
I need a motion and a second for everything but B and C that we split off.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on any of those? Seeing none, if the clerk will call the roll on segment A.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Period six.
Twenty-two dash two one six, segment B, Lindsey Mugrower to the library board. I'll need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? The only discussion would be advising I'm removing myself from consideration because it's my spouse, and I should probably do that, so. We'll take the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Present.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Period five.
Final, uh, twenty-two dash two one six, segment C, Mr. Joe Stevenson for the RDA. Take a motion and a second.
Is it to approve or?
Everything's always in the affirmative, so this will be to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I need to, I want to discuss, because I'm the one that split it off. So, uh, looking at the appointment for, for Mr. Stevenson to the RDA, I have some concerns, and felt it appropriate to, to, to bring those to the council for, for their thoughts on this. The RDA is one of our statutory requirement, um, boards and commissions, and the work that they do is, is essential. It's also at times privileged, and it's necessary and vital to, to the arc, to the redevelopment of this community. I think Mr. Stevens, while a very capable individual and educated and has an extensive background in the planning process and community development, I think that creates a inherent and unavoidable conflict for Mr. Stevens, Stevenson, excuse me, and I can't support his appointment to the RDA because of that. I think this individual, I believe I, I voted for his appointment to the parks board, capable individual, a community volunteer, um, and probably would be well poised and well positioned to be on our planning commission, but I can't support, um, his appointment to the RDA. Uh, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Again, I, I get back to, I don't, I don't believe in firing volunteers. The, the individual that, uh, this person is, is replacing, uh, showed a great interest in, in renewing, uh, their, their two-year term. The, him and his entire family have served this community well. I, I just think it's a slippery slope when we start firing volunteers. It, it's, it, we got to beg people to be on these boards and commissions and, and to fire them and not reach out to them or talk to them. I, I've made these points before, so I, I, I just can't vote for this as well. So, and it has absolutely nothing to do with, with the appointee. It's just, uh, I, I just disagree with the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And I should clarify before any further comments, um, just for those listening, and, and clarification of the reason, Mr. Stevenson is the Director of Planning and Development for a Fox Delight Community in the city of Kekona, and that would be my, my reason for the, uh, the conflict.
Two things, first of all, uh, point of order, we're not discussing, uh, the, uh, term expirations, we're talking about appointments of new members. And, um, I'd like Deputy Mayor to be a little more specific about what he views, uh, what he cites to be a conflict. Are you talking about an ethical conflict? Are you talking, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I'd be happy to explain a bit further. The RDA, uh, frequently negotiates, um, with developers between our agreements, TIFs, things of that nature, um, the sensitive nature of, of some of the things that they, they do, they're in charge of, of facilitating the redevelopment of, of this community and the continued expansion and, um, development efforts. And, um, having a community development director from another community on our RDA potentially gives that community a leg up in its negotiations, as well as any of the information that he may be privileged to. And while I'm not questioning his ethics, it creates an unavoidable conflict, in my opinion, for the role that he serves in his community, as well as then the, um, the volunteer aspect of, of the role here, that it puts him in an untenable position, and even putting him up for a nomination, I don't agree with. So that's the reason I can't support his appointment to the RDA.
Well, I'll offer an additional view on this. Mr. Stevenson has long been a community member here in Oshkosh and happens to lead one of the newer neighborhood associations, and has put a, a great deal of time and effort into, um, central city revitalization through personal investment, uh, in their home, along with many volunteer hours in the neighborhood. And his professional experience actually makes him extremely qualified for this position. And as a professional, I believe that Mr. Stevenson is aware of his ethical obligations and certainly, um, a different perspective offered in terms of this nomination or this recommendation.
Council member forward?
Yeah, bear with me if I ramble a little bit, I'm thinking this through in real time. So first off, I, I know the applicant, uh, in question. I have zero doubts about his integrity, ability, commitment to navigate any individual specific I have zero doubts about his integrity, ability, commitment to navigate any individual-specific conflicts of interest that arise. The applicant is certainly an asset to this community, as, as the mayor just pointed out. Frankly, the applicant is an asset to the planning profession, is a rising star in the, in the planning profession. But trying to take personalities out of this to practice what I preach. So just, correct me if I'm wrong here, but thinking about what the RDA does. They negotiate, they purchase property, they're involved in the development process. There's a lot of overlap there between what they do and the professional duties that the applicant does for another municipality. So I try to go back to, would a reasonable person find this as an inherent conflict of interest? And I think, I think, I think unfortunately, the answer is yes. I don't like that. I don't think it's at all fair to the applicant that he's in this position. Because certainly, right, the implication that there's some personal ethical or moral inability is just incorrect in this specific case. It's a positional thing. Our boards need to be places where we build trust with the community, places where we are serving as an asset to the operational folks in our city. And even the, the hint of any type of conflict inherent is problematic. So yeah, it, it bothers me. It bothers me that we're in this position, and like I said, it really bothers me that the applicant is put, is put in this position. But just speaking for myself, I think as a reasonable person, I, I could see why there's an inherent conflict there. And I hate it because I hate it, I don't want to discourage this applicant. And this is personally difficult for me, because I think so highly of him. But I think you're correct, I think there is an inherent conflict there.
Ms. Erickson.
Thanks. Can I ask City Attorney Lawrenceon, do you have any additional input or perspective on if this is a conflict or things we should take into consideration?
The determination of whether you have a conflict on an individual matter is up to the person. So it would be something that he would have to be aware of, he would have to, you know, evaluate for himself. I'm not familiar with this person, so that's about all I can tell you.
Are you, did you have a follow-up?
No, I was just curious.
Could I ask Ms. Nyforth to come forward? I hope this isn't putting you in an awkward position to ask you a question of a fellow peer. But if you were living in Kekona and had the time available to invest in your community where you live and were interested in applying to be on their redevelopment authority, is that something that you feel that we're in such regular competition for things or that the negotiation or that the redevelopment authority would present a problem in your professional practice?
I can only speak personally for myself. I guess I would not put myself in that position where there could even be a question of it, but it's something that, you know, like you had said, his expertise would be very valued on the RDA. His commitment to the city is obviously well-known with his involvement with the advisory parks board and then the neighborhood associations. So, like I said, personally, that would be something I would choose not to do. But I think that, you know, if we could, you know, maybe, I don't, like, City Lawrenceon said, it's Attorney Lawrenceon said, it's hard to really, you know, tell somebody that, you know, you, you know, there's concerns or it's, it's really up to the individual. So that's personally what I would think, so I, I guess that's where I'll leave that.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thank you. I'm struggling with this one a little bit, hearing from all these different perspectives. I just, I can't help but feel this could lead to a slippery slope where we're deciding what's, what are people's conflicts of interest and not, and that can very easily border on our personal opinions regarding these people. And I'm not saying this is one of those cases. I don't personally know this individual, so I'm speaking as someone kind of from that perspective. But this is a tough one, I'm, I'm thinking I'm going to have to abstain from this one. But I do appreciate the different perspectives on this.
Thank you, Mr. Wojciechowski. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that I, I'm not, which is hard. This isn't about personality. I mean, this is about position. This is a hundred percent a public sector thing, of remove the individual from it. And it's not about an individual's ability to successfully navigate conflicts of interest. It's about perceptions that become reality in the community, about an inherent structural conflict, and that's what concerns me. And again, that's why I think it's fundamentally unfair that he's even in this position, but.
I'll just break up an example without naming names. The plan commission actually benefits from something similar. A recent appointment this year. A gentleman whose term expired a few years ago, applied again. And very clearly stated in his application that while he was a developer, he would abstain for, or recuse from anything that would be a potential even perception. And I feel that we should give Mr. Stevenson that same afford. Or otherwise, you know, we have to start whittling down many of our boards and commissions because we are a talented community and we have a willingness of young people to come and serve. And when I was elected mayor, my commitment to this community was to provide openings when those terminations, and we do not have term, we do not have lifetime terms on, while we encourage folks to continual, to build our institutional knowledge, we're also opening up seats at the table. Because if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, right? We don't have anyone right now on the redevelopment authority other than myself as the current chair that lives in the central city. Mr. Stevenson is well-versed in blight and redevelopment and lives and committed to the central city where we are practicing many of these transactions. I, I leave it at that.
Councilmember Ford?
No, I mean, reasonable question. I think I've been on plan commission a long time. It's worth pointing out that we don't deal with privileged information. We operate in a public sphere. We don't engage in contracts as, as an entity. So there definitely is, there is, there is a difference in the ability of an individual to successfully navigate the ethical dilemmas that come up, serving on a board that's strictly a land use board like plan commission compared to a, a state authorized board like the RDA. There, there is a difference there, in my opinion.
And they also operate as a quasi-judicial entity at times as well.
If there's no other discussion, if the clerk, clerk will please take the roll on twenty-two dash two-one-six, section C.
Wojciechowski.
Present.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
No.
Mugrower.
No.
Miller.
No.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Fails, three-two.
Next, we're up to new ordinances. It's also eight o'clock, and staff and council's been going since five. Is council interested in a brief break? We still have quite a few things ahead of us.
Five minutes.
Let's take a, a brief five-minute recess, we'll be back very shortly.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at OshkoshMedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at OshkoshMedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at OshkoshMedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at OshkoshMedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at OshkoshMedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at OshkoshMedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at OshkoshMedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly.
No action this evening. Approved zone change from single-family residential nine district, SR nine, to institutional district with a planned development overlay, IPD. For properties located on the west side of the 500 block of Monroe Street, plan commission recommends approval. Is there anyone registered to speak on this one?
No, there's not.
If council has any questions, I believe a member of that group is, is here to discuss if we needed anything answered.
You want to come up?
Unless you have questions?
No, looks like none tonight, we'll, we'll see you in two weeks for the final. Uh, next thing on the agenda, new resolutions, twenty-two dash two-one-nine. Approve annual city licenses renewals. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, if you'll call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution twenty-two dash two-twenty, approve proclamations policy. Motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, just want to point out, and this is straight out of the staff's memo, that this is about us making sure our policies are consistent with the new Supreme Court decision. Is that correct, City Attorney Lawrenceon?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you for the clarification.
And just also, you know, this is something that we've been talking about for quite some time. Right now, without a policy and/or a process, it can be confusing to folks who are trying to request these proclamations and get the information and in a timely way. And certainly, this year has been high demand with the backlog of events and, and things of that nature. So I'll be supporting this.
And actually, I just have one brief question, I think, for City Attorney Lawrenceon or even the city clerk. Reading through it, it sounds like these will now be included in the agenda packet for us to actually read, because there's an approval.
I think we have to talk about that at staff meeting. It would be at least available ahead of time, so that if it, if they're not done by Friday to go in the packet, they would be available that if you asked for it, yeah.
Perfect, appreciate the clarification. No other discussion, we'll take the roll on twenty-two dash two-twenty.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next up, resolution twenty-two dash two-twenty-one, approve state municipal agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the rehabilitation of South Washburn Street from West Twentieth Avenue to Dickinson Avenue. Take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, if you'll take the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution twenty-two dash two-twenty-two, approve state municipal agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation of Transportation for the rehabilitation of Osborne Street from 1,600 feet west of Mason Street to Knapp Street. Motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, take the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 22-223, amend the 2022 operating budget to approve additional battalion chief position in the Ashkosh Fire Department. Take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Fitz, you want to lead off here?
Sure. This position is being requested because of the workload that's been identified for the battalion chiefs. Just to provide a little bit of insight associated with this, back in 2017, there really were six battalion chiefs. That's how it was structured. And after that time, two of those positions were re-titled to be called Division Chiefs because they're more involved in programmatic activity, and they're on a 40-hour work week. And one of those positions was elevated to the Assistant Chief level, but that position was never backfilled. So because of the disparity in terms of the schedules, where we had three people that were working a 24-hour shift and two people that were working a 40-hour shift, and the elevation of that additional position to the Assistant Chief level, it really created an additional burden for those 24-hour shift commanders that are operating in that capacity, the actual ones that remain titled as a battalion chief. So during the collective bargaining process this year, we talked at quite a great length with the chief officers group about their workload and the ability for people to fill in, their ability to take vacation, the fact that in the past, the chief and assistant chief worked downward, for lack of a better word, into their area to try to give them relief. But that, you know, isn't possible any longer, and it isn't taking place, so it just created a burden that became apparent when we were having dialogue during collective bargaining. And that, you know, was brought forward to me certainly, and I discussed it with City Manager Roloff and also Chief Stanley. And that manifested itself really in this request to the council.
So let's take it a step further, because some of my emails and conversations are with our firefighters, you know. I always get concerned on how this stuff is viewed. You know, our forced call-ins are an issue. You and I have discussed that and some of those things. This is going to look like a top-heavy addition to our firefighters and the guys that are getting forced call-ins and things like that, and maybe you can address some of that, Fitz, and maybe talk about, you know, we're hiring ahead of time and doing some of those things to solve those problems.
Absolutely.
And to make, to let the firefighters know we're committed to this, that solving these forced call-in issues.
Absolutely, and I think this is a separate issue where there's a
Agreed.
A certain need, but to address the point that you brought up, you know, we've had a number of discussions with International Association of Firefighters about their concerns in regard to our ability to recruit folks, our ability to staff all the positions. We're a little bit short in that area right now. And we talked at collective bargaining with that group also about different ideas in terms of how we could minimize the impact to those people, especially the ones that are called in on overtime, the ones that are least senior, and that collective bargaining agreement is structured in a manner where it provides the opportunity for the least senior to work overtime. But it also creates a heavy burden when we have a vacancy for those individuals, too. So we talked at great length with those folks at the bargaining table. They know that it's something that we want to try to address, and we have tried to address. And we're also working on alternate strategies, actually, right now with them in regard to how we can create different pipelines to the city in terms of how we recruit, maybe from other communities. That was another thing that was an outcome of our collective bargaining agreement, but we're actually looking at the possibility of how we can even, you know, take that another step further. But it's a process that we have to have dialogue on, and, you know, both parties have to agree.
Sure, I get it.
Yep, but we were fully aware of that, and we are fully committed to trying to work on that. And actually, Greg Stelter, who is a battalion chief, works one of those 24-hour positions, can speak to it a little bit more in detail.
Thanks, Chief.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the council, first of all, for paying attention to this issue. It's very important to us, and I know you have a lot of issues to deal with, so thank you for putting some time into this. I appreciate it. If I may speak to Councilmember Miller's question, as a perception, you are correct that we do have a lot of ordering in, and we are trying to address that, as John said, with additional hiring. But the problem there is that we're short, so we know we have vacancies, and we are trying very, very hard to fill those vacancies, including recruiting nationally, which is a new thing for our department. We've had some good success with that with two new members. So their perception is correct that we, that they are short in their ranks, but for the reason that the positions are there, we're struggling to fill them. And I think what we're talking about in this position is not having enough positions at battalion chief level. As you may have seen in the memorandum, we're at a one-to-one staffing ratio, so that means that if someone takes vacation or goes sick, for example, one of my coworkers currently has been diagnosed with COVID, so how do those spots get filled? They get filled with the other two of three members. So, for example, this week, I'll be working 96 hours, last week was 78, and we don't feel that's sustainable and frankly borderline dangerous, and we're looking for some assistance with that.
Thanks, Chief.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, thank you. No question, I'm just
Okay, thank you.
Wax poetic here. No, I don't love the timing of this. I mean, I really think that this is a request that would have been more appropriate if the 2022 budget wasn't in there. There were other things in there. At the same time, my dad always said that, you know, don't get mad when you need new brakes in your car, because what are you going to do without brakes? Fire service is kind of the same deal, right? This is one of the most expensive and most important things, most universal, one of the more universal services we have here in the city of Ashkosh, so I'm happy to support this today because of that.
Any other discussion on the topic? I know the last couple of budget cycles, I've been a proponent of this role, of adding to this role. But even to Councilmember Ford's point, what bugs me the most, just to put it bluntly, is that this is outside the normal process, is that this should have been, this should be a budget thing, right? We should be listening to this in October, November and making that call. But I understand the uniqueness of this, and we've been attempting to address this particular issue for a couple of budgets. Previously, we had allowed some backfill pay for some, allowing some captains, I believe it's captains, to fill in for BCS, doing some different roles. They've tried the other steps. Unfortunately, we're at the point of we need another body, we need another spot to fill that gap, to fill that needed leadership post. To Councilmember Miller's point, we've got some vacancies that we need filled, so the guys in the line also aren't being forced into working too many hours and being forced into too many call-ins. But the one on the table now is this. I'm not a fan that it's outside the process, because I'm a process guy, but I trust the chief, and we have the financing to back it up, and I'll be supporting the request. So if there's nothing else, the clerk will call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next on the agenda, resolution 22-224, approve amendment of city ward maps to comply with legislative district boundaries.
Just a point of order here, I don't see in the packet unless there was, I'm realizing it's a really large
There was a update.
In the, okay.
So basically, you're asking if this is the final final?
Yep, it wasn't included in the final packet.
Okay, I missed getting that downloaded. All right, thank you.
When the county was entering it into the Wisconsin system, an error was noted that they let us know about, so we're just trying to make all the pieces match.
If I can get a motion in a second to put on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
So we're sure it's a final final?
It sounds like it's a final final.
At this point.
All right, if you'll call the roll on 22-224.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Now, we're in the council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. Number 25, future agenda item, looks like the June 14th, we'll be getting some information and making a recommendation to the Wisconsin DOT regarding the Jackson Oregon Street Bridge.
Yes, we've met last week, we did a workshop with the Plan Commission, and we also had an action item on the Bike and Pedestrian Committee Agenda last Thursday. We will be having an action item on the June 7th Plan Commission meeting, sustainability on June 6th, and then traffic and parking will be discussing it June 14th before the council meeting. So we will be having all of that information, certainly all of them except traffic and parking, we'll have in the memo when we get it to you, but traffic and parking, we will inform you of that night of what their recommendation was. Mr. Bertrand from DOT will be here to answer any questions that you might have that night. He is not planning a presentation at this time. I think we've had a lot of presentations. I want to thank Ashkosh Media for recording not only the council workshop, but the public information meeting that the DOT held virtually. Both of those are available for viewing on the Ashkosh Media YouTube channel, so that information is out there for anyone to be able to see. We've also had newsletter articles last week, and we'll have them upcoming each week leading up to this action item, asking the general public if they have any recommendations or any comments that they would like to make, that they can email them to the city manager's generic email account, and Diane will be putting those together and getting them to council for your information and discussion that night as well.
As a follow-up to the workshop, we had one of the, at least one of my requests, has city staff been in direct communication with the few property owners that this directly impacts? One of these decisions is going to drastically impact access to, specifically to Beckett's and the surrounding businesses in the city center, you know, former Park Plaza Mall, those retail and commercial establishments, have we been?
I know City Manager Roloff has had several conversations with Chris Larson from Beckett's, Community Development Director Nyforth has had direct communications with the agent representing the new property owner on the south side of the river, and the Merge Group was a part of our stakeholder group meeting as well, so.
I guess if, at some point, if they have opinions, they would like us to know if those could be communicated to us, whether it's a memo or whatever fashion, just so we're all equally aware of what their thoughts are. If you had anything else to add, you go right ahead.
We actually did just have a conversation with Merge earlier this week. While the fixed bridge was not their favorite option, we are going to be working with them on ways to, you know, work their development into it. But yes, we have had communications with all of the property owners.
26, future meetings, nothing under this. Future workshops, June 14th, fire facility study at 5:00 PM.
Right, we had a meeting with Chief Stanley to talk about the outcome with the consultant that he had selected, and that's really the last departmental-oriented study that's still out there. So we thought it made sense to talk about that as part of a workshop that day on the 14th, but then discuss the whole, the plan associated with all city facilities right after, so you could, so we wouldn't have a gap, so it'd be easy for you to see how that fits into the overall picture of the city facility study. That's going to include also some financial forecasting by Finance Director Van Gompo. So I think that'll be helpful for everybody to get an idea of what we're talking about. It shouldn't be really that shocking. I know we've shared with the council the ADA study, also the comprehensive facility study, and we've talked about a funding model, actually, at the last strategic planning session that would, you know, build in the potential for us to try to address this on an ongoing basis. So that's really kind of a outline of how I think we're going to address this, and I think it, we've preliminarily taken a look at it, and I think it'll be good. I think a lot of good work was put into it by all departments, and so I think it'll be a good planning tool for council to consider. And then the budget workshop, 5:00 to 7:00 on the 6th. For the strategic planning workshop on the 12th, there is a change in the venue. It's not going to be at the Culver Center, it's going to be at Ashkosh Corporation Headquarters. So that's just an update.
Why the change?
Diane talked to the Culver Center, and the availability there was limited. We were going to be in a small room with no windows, and they were going to charge us, whereas we can go to the Ashkosh Corporation Headquarters and have a little bit more room to do some, do a little more breakouts, to have a little bit more flexibility, and it's not going to cost us anything. So that's the change.
Will there be coffee?
What's that?
Will there be coffee?
There'll be coffee.
Plenty of caffeine.
And some refreshments, so.
All right. Next up, number 28, Mayor's Youth Council.
So this is a little bit mis-titled. It should, it actually should have reflected, the youth ex officio memberships, or I'm sorry, seats available for youth on the boards and commissions. The Mayor's Youth Council was an original idea, and it morphed into us passing the option for these positions for high school students. And obviously, during the last couple of years, and the pandemic, and school schedules and shutdowns and all of that, it really didn't make it off the ground. Now that things are back in person and summer is upon us, I just wanted to make sure folks understand that those applications are now online, along with our other, our boards and commissions that allow for those. They are non-voting, and they are only for the term of one year. So if you're interested and you're a high school student and would like to serve on the board and commission, any of our boards and commissions, please go to our website where we list those out and the ones that are available. I believe, Lynn, there were a couple that would not work out for because they were quasi-judicial.
Correct.
Yes, so they're non-voting, but they definitely are very participatory, and it sounds like we have a couple of folks who are interested in applying already.
That's great. Fantastic. Next up, councilmember announcements and statements, report of council deans for boards and commissions. Councilmember Wojciechowski?
Thank you. So yesterday, DEI met, but this was the second month in a row that we had to cancel our meeting because we could not meet quorum. So there is a real concern with just filling these roles, so I don't know what that looks like, but I hope we can try to think of something to recruit or encourage people to apply for these committees, because, you know, there's a lot of important work we're trying to do, and we can't, we're being crippled by that when we can't have people, when we can't even have our meetings. So I know there was a larger concern with members of the committee about how we can be more accessible and the conversation about, you know, making it, how we had it before, where you could do in-person and virtual at the same time. And that's kind of also more of like a, us being the DEI committee, kind of pushing for being more accessible, yet we are kind of prohibited a little bit in doing that. So I know that might be another topic that the committee might be taking on in the future that could possibly come back to council to relook at. But yeah, if you're interested in joining at least the DEI committee, highly encourage
Tonight, you know, revisited, sorry.
You're okay. Councilmember Erickson?
Similar with Transit Advisory Board, we're close to not being able to meet quorum, so if anyone is a transit rider, uses Go Transit or has an interest in it, I think we're looking for some new members for that. And I do have some updated ridership numbers. Ridership overall for Go Transit is slowly getting back to like pre-COVID levels and for student ridership, they've continued to see an increase, especially with parochial six through 12 students. So they've seen a 548% increase through April year-to-date and overall have seen a large increase for student riders. So definitely a demand there.
And I'll just share really briefly that Bike and Ped met last week in preparation for the big Bike Osh event, which took place over the weekend on Saturday. And from what I understand, it was quite a success. Want to appreciate, express that appreciation to all those Bike and Ped members and staff that worked on that event as well as our Pedal Pass participants. Oh, say that really fast three times. Yes, thank you.
Go right ahead.
Real quick, sorry, I wanted to just mention, just a reminder that this Saturday is the Mong National Memorial Day Festival and I believe every council member has been invited to be recognized and be a part of the celebration, so just encouraging people to go to that.
Thank you. It is a lot of fun and very educational.
All right, we're on to city manager announcement and statements. Fitz, take it away.
I don't have any announcements or statements, other than if you have the status of outstanding issues, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do you get a raise for this meeting?
I don't want to push my luck with city manager.
That might be the shortest statement Assistant City Manager Fitzpatrick has ever made.
I guess I'd like to just say, I think Mark and his family are all in our hearts and prayers and we miss him and we wish him the very best and to his entire family, so thanks for filling in for him, Fitz.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, we'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved? All in favor, say aye.
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 We're adjourned.